The gang's all here.
At this time, we will bring the September 12th, 2017 meeting to order of this Act and School Committee at six o'clock, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any adjustments to our agenda tonight?
We do not.
No, I guess I do. We were supposed to have like a 1.3 for executive session. I thought I emailed you guys, but that could have just been a thought.
It's on the back.
Will you have an executive session?
Number nine.
No, no, no. We're supposed to report out on the executive session that we had at the last meeting if there was something to report out, and we do have something to report out if we look at the minutes.
You do?
Mm-hmm.
That nothing happened.
We voted on something?
No, we report out. It was here.
It said, "Number nine, executive session, 9:47, motion to come out, adjournment."
Oh, there you go.
No motion to.
No action taken.
No action taken.
Oh, the action completed was review the process of the super principal evaluation and review the process.
Right.
So, I mean, that's all.
Which we're doing tonight.
I just want to make sure people don't think we're doing some weird stuff.
Right. Kevin and Don, pardon.
No, but we're supposed to have 1.3 no matter what, I think, and then say yes or no.
And you met an executive session without me because it was about me, and then we meet tonight on the same thing.
That was fun.
I bet. We'll find out tonight, won't we? They won't, I will.
Anyway, I just want to make sure we keep that on the agenda.
Okay, number two. I assume there's no comments from the public because I see no public. So, let's move on to number three, and I will look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Moved by Mary, seconded by Jeanette, with the consent agenda be accepted. Any discussion? All in favor? Four and all. Andy, under the chair reports, you were going to report out first, right?
Yes, please. And I want to thank Judy for 4-1, which is a superintendent update because I found last year if I had a few things to say, I was using the comments from the public dime. So, there really wasn't a window here for me to set some, just some things to throw out there to get the meeting going. And what I wanted to do for the superintendent update, just, this is the first meetings in school has opened and kids are back, so for the public and the school committee, I want to thank Andy and the crew for the great job they did over the summer. Place looks great. They're in here every day doing preventive maintenance, doing maintenance, and getting us clean and ready to go. And Andy and his crew does a great job every year. It's the second summer I've had a chance to witness it. So, thanks again. We've had, we're ready to roll, and the place looks great. Andy, you're doing awesome.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
The administrators, we had our regular annual kind of get-together in August, and I want to thank them for getting together, and I also want to welcome Dell to his first Act and School Committee meeting. We hired him over the summer. He's our part-time special ed director with a wealth of experience, and that's already paid off a little bit just having him around a couple of days a week. And I feel like he's been here longer than just, what has it been, a month and a half at the most. So, welcome aboard Dell, and we do this once a month.
Thank you.
Like it or not, once a month, we'll have you here at the table. How's that sound? Welcome aboard. All right. Very good. Mike and Francine, special thanks to you for helping set up the PD Day. We had two great professional development days with the teachers when we came back. I shared with you the kinds of things they learned and we worked on in my superintendent's report, but I wanted to publicly mention both of them. Mike did an excellent job bringing in Mastery Connect trainers from, one from Florida and one from Utah, and they were here with us for two days to help the staff. They did a great job, got great feedback. And Francine co-facilitated, really was the architect of all of the PBIS information we dispatched to the school community, our teachers. And then she and I worked together in professional development, bringing them up to speed. And then in one of the sessions, she did it alone, and I had an opportunity to work with ed techs, which was really cool. And I think I'm going to have at least once a trimester, meet with the ed techs in a voluntary format to kind of just get feedback from them. They're a, they're a group that I miss at staff meetings, so I want to find a way of making sure they're, they have access to me and I to them as a group.
Well, just to talk about the PBIS. I was thinking, because somebody ran into me, not with a car or anything, and they said that they were subbing, and then there's people who volunteer, they need to know how we do the PBIS. Is there some type of sheet we give them? They come in the door, we say, "Listen, this is school-wide. You have to do it this way," so they understand. And this, because the kids will understand more than them, and they need to know.
And in a perfect world, the kids with classroom expectations will be teaching the subs.
Right.
Because there's a routine to everything.
But just to let them know, when someone says, "Ooh, voice level zero," or, you know, they'll be like, "Wow."
Right now, that's part of the subplans per teacher, because we have our school-wide expectations, and then we have our, we call them cohort expectations.
Yeah.
Because it's developmentally different for pre-K through 2 than it is for our 6th through 8 graders.
Right.
But we still want to be respectful, so that's just one of our cornerstones. So, but we, how we teach them is different.
Right.
But then we have our classroom expectations as well within our cohort that might be just particular gym or art that are very different anywhere else. So, all those expectations need to be shared with subs, and it's part of the subplaning for right now.
Okay.
My hope is the kids are in the driver's seat over time, because that's how it should work.
Yes, right.
There'll always be a few that bend the rules because the sub's in the room, but most of the kids will go with the flow.
Yep.
Just also, in opening school, it was smooth, really. I mean, at the end of the first day, Eileen looked at me, and she was exhausted because she came in early and worked a little late, and she said, "Do you remember last year?" And I said, "Sort of." And she said, "Do you remember the bus that came back half full of kids? And we had to figure that out and all the other things that happened?" And I said, "Yeah, you know, that didn't happen this year." And the buses have been running pretty much on time, no major issues so far, and, because I was second year with the company, I think that's part of it, and they know their roots. And staff seem psyched, and the kids are great. So, it was really just a nice, smooth opening, and I just wanted to have an opportunity to kind of lead the, lead the meeting with that. So, thank you.
Great. Thanks. All right. Do any of you have any questions or comments from the administration reports?
Well, I had one mine asked and answered.
Yep.
Kevin asked some. I can report back on those. Without Kevin being here, I thought I would give him some airtime on that. Kevin, and I wrote down, because I emailed it out too, you may not, the board maybe not had the chance to see this because it went out later this afternoon around 4:40. Kevin asked some questions of the administrators. Within the, and a lot of his questions, and they were thoughtful, bulleted points, as Kevin does, will be answered by Dr. Young in her presentation around achievement. And I also sent out a document that answers each one of those bullet points as well to you, so you have that in on your computer. But you'll hear from her in a minute. But with mine, he asked in the superintendent's report, Kevin asked about the cohorts' use of collaborative time, and I wrote, "In essence, the areas of lesson creation, classroom instruction, and assessing student work will be our focus for the year as is directly connected to our achievement for the work for the year. All probationary teachers and continuing contract teachers on the red cycle will have two goals that I provide, and they'll also have two to three goals of their own based on the Marziano framework. And the first one is book at least a minimum of two dates in separate topic or discipline areas, depending on which grade they teach. Two, minimum of two, where the instructional coach will video your instruction and offer feedback. And then, of course, as the supervisors, I'll be looking for how did that impact achievement over time. And the second goal that I'm going to be looking for, for everybody on my cycle for this year, is demonstrate PBIS classroom expectation, expectations inclusive of rewards as part of lesson design and pedagogy or how they teach their class. So, we want to incorporate that PBIS piece into not only the, into the classroom, so we're actually teaching behaviors as well as teaching academics. And his other question pertained to levels of achievement, which is actually 7.2 on tonight's agenda, and I have some handouts for that, so we'll go, we'll share that, and I made 10 copies. So, that's to take care of the few questions that Kevin sent in.
Mary's were answered online, too. Correct.
If the board would allow, I'd love to speak to one of the bullets that was in my special ed directors report.
Absolutely.
It had to do with discussions I've had with Kim with regard to main care billing, and I just would love to have the opportunity to share my thoughts around the main care billing with the board and what, essentially, main care billing, some of the services that we provide can be billed for through main care. Some schools do this, and some schools do not. The, the, I am not a proponent of main care billing for several reasons. For one is, when we bill main care, what we're saying is that everything that we're doing is medically necessary. And what we're doing, our job here and our focus, whether it's a physical therapist, occupational therapist, or speech therapist, is to support their students' educational programming. So, goals aren't necessarily written in the medical model, and so there's, there can be some risks with saying that everything we're doing is medically necessary. And the other piece that the board needs to know is that in the EPS formula, the Essential Programs and Services model, the formula that's used for special ed treats that billing as a revenue and thus backs it out of the allocation that we receive. So, not only are we, you know, there's a liability piece, but there's also the fact that they're backing it out, so we're not gaining anything from it. And then, we're using multi-state billing, and we're paying them 10% on every dollar.
Right, because they're doing the work, the paperwork.
Yeah, the billing. So, actually, it's costing us money to bill, and so my recommendation to the board would be that we forego the billing because of the fact that it's actually costing the taxpayer more money to bill than it would without, the way the EPS formula is set right now.
So, we've been billing?
Yeah, we don't. Multi-state billing does. Our Medicare is pretty dollar-wise, it's pretty small.
Yeah.
However, we, when we do our budget, we always have our EPS amount. We never budget anything for Medicare.
Right.
Because I know that whatever I get in Medicare, they're going to decrease my EPS amount.
Yeah.
So, it always comes out, but Dell's right in the fact that for us to be able to actually do that billing, even though it's a small amount, because you have to have all the medical codes and all that stuff, and that's what multi-state billing does, and they charge, so like if we spend $4,000 on Medicare, they'll take $400 just to do the billing.
Right.
So, I think on average, we, last year, we had like 16, so it was $1,600 that went to multi-state billing that if we didn't do the billing, we'd still get the same amount.
I thought we had to bill, like, say we had, just say we had someone with hearing aids or slash, you know.
It's not a statutory requirement.
We're blind. I thought we had to bill. For the services, no?
No, many, many, many districts, for a lot of different reasons, forego the billing altogether. It's a little bit different for students that are outplaced because that's, that kind of falls into a different.
Yeah.
And one of the, one of the most, the complicating pieces of this is, it's something called seed money. And seed money is the portion that the state would normally pay for main care versus, the federal government's paying 62%, and the state of Maine normally would pay 38. But for the schools that access main care, the state's not going to pay that share, the school is going to pay that share. So, that's called, that's what they call, but the state fronts it upfront, they'll pay for it, but then they pull it in what's called seed money. And so, it comes out of the monthly or quarterly payments that come from the state, but the problem is they don't do it on a consistent basis, so Kim doesn't know when they're going to pull that money, and then it's, that's just the way the state runs.
But just so I know, was it the occupational therapist or the speech therapist that would say, "I did the services on this page, patient, this student," and that, then those reports just go to their company and they bill it?
Right.
But like, who else would be doing it? The special ed teachers? Like, no one else, just therapists?
Well, related service providers, which would be the speech and language, the OT.
I think at one point, we thought if we could do this billing, it would help offset the cost of these people.
Mm-hmm.
But if that's not even happening.
It's not. And you have to follow all the medical codes, you know, so it's not like just check off logs. It's not that simple. And I know last year, a lot of stuff got rejected because they went and changed the code numbers, and so they had to resend everything back.
No, but to me, it sounds like a lot of paperwork on the occupational person's side when they could be spending that time with the children.
Right.
Well, and that's true. And so, some districts have decided, "No, I'd rather that time be spent for direct care."
As long as we don't have to do it, I don't.
No. I mean, if it isn't, if it's not a requirement, if it's not a requirement, it's not benefiting us. If it is in fact costing us, then it's silly to continue to do it.
Now, we've been doing it, right? Are they going to ask questions why you stopped, or it just won't show up and they just float over their head?
At the state level?
Yeah, basically just stops.
State level, we'll never know.
I mean, they'll never know. They'll just float over their heads and not.
They'll say, "We hired someone who can't do it."
Well, they'll see it, they won't, they won't see it as a revenue anymore.
Yeah, so I mean, the revenue line, so that's going to decrease.
Right.
But again, it doesn't, I mean, if it's zero, we still get the same amount.
Right.
So, and you'll see, you can actually go online and look at that EPS formula. It's the six-step special ed formula, and you'll see that if you look, and it's, it's 6.1 is what it is. It's a maintenance of effort is what that particular one where they back it out. And you'll notice in many, many districts, I'll have zeros in that, in that revenue slot.
Oh, so they won't.
Because they're not, they're, I mean, they've decided, well, and there was quite a few districts also got hit with fines about five years ago.
Right, if you're not doing it right, or you're overbilling or billing twice. I mean, who can keep track? Let's give it a whirl and don't do it.
So, is this anything we have to vote on, or?
Well, I just, I just wanted to share the.
I think it'll come up in the budget process.
Just a procedural update, yeah.
Yeah, it'll come up in the budget process when we talk about revenue.
No contract with the billing company? Hmm? There's no contract?
Any commitment contract with them? No.
No, multi-state billing, they've been calling the main office because they, they want a contract, and I'm like, "No, Eileen, tell them no. We're not going to do a contract with them because we, we were on a three-year contract. It's over."
Oh, okay.
So, as long as we don't.
Oh, then good.
So, it's time to, time to back away.
Yeah, this would be the time to say, "Okay, well, we'll talk with our contracted people and say, 'Don't bill for Medicare.'"
Yeah, right.
And we'll be done with that.
That sounds good to me.
Because once they stop, everything else.
Well, you know, we're not in the medical field here. This is ridiculous, you know?
Well, the other thing, too, is like Dell was saying, it's also the liability factor. You know, you don't, if you're supposed to be doing something that is medically necessary, but we're working on education, are we in a gray zone?
Right. Sounds good to me. Thank you for bringing that to us.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Very good news.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, can I jump on one, too?
Sure.
We did get a letter from RHR Smith with regards to doing a school audit only, and it would be about $1,000, which we, in our Article VII, we could do that within our professional line, especially because this is not a contact year and that type of stuff, so I think we'll have enough money to cover that. I think it's important that we have our own school audit for the transparency sake for, there are a lot of people out there that, you know, they look at the town report when it comes back from the auditors, and because they combine the town and the school together, it gets muddled, even I can't really separate it out. And I think if we had our own report that says, "This is the school only," and then everything else is, "Okay, school and town," but at least you could pull out and say, "This is the school," and the taxpayer will know exactly what the school's doing and not.
No, we definitely wanted to do that. We discussed it. We want to pull it out.
Yeah.
It would be put in the town report in a separate section. This is the, this is the municipal audit, and this is a school audit, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And so, I did ask if they would be able to, because they've already completed the school audit.
Yeah. Can they still do it?
And they will be able, they all, I told them we would talk about it tonight, and if, if everything is a go with you guys, if everybody's happy with it, and they will complete it, and when they finish the town, there'll be two books. There'll be the school's book, and then there'll be the town book, so, but I kind of wanted to, I was hoping everybody would be.
Do other schools do that?
What?
Do the other, other schools?
Other districts do do that, yeah.
Almost all schools do that, yeah. Almost all schools do. We're one of the few that do not.
Oh.
And, and the only reason why we don't is because the RFP was done by the town, so they didn't really, you know, they just, they just did it based on what they've always done in the past, and I said, you know, we really should separate the school, and so we, just the school would have to pick it up.
I would think it would make, make sense for the town as well, not to have all our school stuff in, mixed into the expenditures, I would think.
Judy, can I make a recommendation now that this is out and being discussed? Although it's probably, it may not be legally necessary, it's my recommendation to you that you make a motion to accept the recommendation of the audit being separate, to have it in the minutes, and that the school board has embraced and voted on this, because when our auditors come back, we just want to make sure that, even if we don't need the vote, we have it. I would feel more comfortable with that because this is a change in practice, and I'm not sure where that line is. So, if you take the vote and we don't need it, we're still safe.
Somebody want to make that a motion?
Because it'd probably be a surprise to Town Hall. No?
No, Kim's communicated that to them.
Oh, you already talked about, yeah, and the selectmen, and, you know.
They're like, "Yeah, sure, pay for it."
Well, I'll make a motion that we pull out the school portion of the audit and make it separate.
I'll second that. Now, it's all going to be in the same town report, same book, same everything.
It'll be two books.
Just disaggregated.
Two books.
Well, they might connect it with a page in between.
Okay, and that'll be our school audit book.
Right.
And then, there'll be a town audit book where they combine them together, which is what most towns do.
Right.
The school will be separate.
The town report will have both audits.
Yes.
That's what you're talking about.
Separately.
Yeah, they'll both be in there, but there'll be separate audits.
Right.
But they'll be in, they'll both be in the town report.
That's what I'm talking about. She keeps talking about two books. I'm talking about.
Yeah, we'll have our own audit book, which is really, yeah.
Yeah, okay, but we don't want them to go through any, well, okay. Yeah, you kept saying two books, and I'm saying.
Well, you'll, you will see two books.
Yeah, it's a book when it comes back, right.
I know, but when the, when the public goes to pick up the town report, they'll be able to see two separate. That's all they care about.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Thank you.
Four and all. Any other questions or comments about reports from the administrators? Okay, and let's move on to number five, progress monitoring reports, and we're going to be talking about NWA scores.
Are you, we going to use the projector for this? Okay, I'll get out of the way.
I know the agenda says it's for one class, but I set it up so we can look at each grade progression from our, I'm sorry, our fall NWA assessment last year through the spring, so the growth that each grade made in each subject area.
From fall to spring.
From fall to spring. All right, so the core content areas that are assessed are reading, math, and science, and they're two separate tests. I just couldn't figure out how to add another little picture. And then, language. And language includes writing and grammar, so usage. So, in reading, starting with kindergarten, and these would be our baseline scores that we use to start setting goals for students at the beginning of the year. That's our fall thing. And spring is the progress that they made. And the plus or minus just indicates the growth, or maybe a little lack thereof, with each grade level. Younger grades tend to make leaps and bounds over the course of the year because their brand-new little brains are just soaking things up like sponges, and those numbers start to get a little, decrease a little bit as we go, but that doesn't mean that learning isn't taking place. I'm not sure what happened with reading in sixth grade. That's a conversation that I'll need to have with the teacher and see if there was some sort of an anomaly, something happened, because that's, that's not characteristic when we look at all the scores from reading. That's the only place that shows.
But this is all students and special ed students also?
Everybody is.
Okay.
And that's the only area where there was a shortfall. So, it's, given that every other area showed progress, I think that there's something else going on that may have caused that. It could have been a student was off by one number or, and just didn't, you know, track properly. Along with our NWA, we also use Fanta's and Pennell as a leveled benchmark assessment for reading skills, and we start with kindergarten. And A is the first book that comes in, very simplistic, maybe two or three-word sentences on each page. And as students are able to progress through the levels, and they go up through Z, they're scored on their fluency and their accuracy, and as they're able to move through those, when they get to level Z, they test out. We have some students who in fifth grade hit level Z, and they're considered independent readers, and, you know, we just keep encouraging them, and they go from there. And we have, we have a few who in our junior high, our middle school, they, they struggle around the X and Y area, and they need a little bit of an extra push, and they get that additional support. And then, Fanta's and Pennell just gives us another good daily running record that we can use to more accurately kind of design and implement curriculum that's specific to students' needs. Math, same setup as the reading, our fall scores would be our baseline. Spring, for all of the grade levels, show growth with most of it being with our little ones and their little spongy brains. Third, I, I thought it was interesting that 3 through 5 cohort were very consistent in their progress across all three grades. I'm interested in having a conversation with that cohort to see what it was, was there just a common approach that all the teachers were using that kind of kept everybody making the same level of progress? I just, that seems like an interesting area to look into. And with our middle school, again, the growth slows a bit, but it does still show that students are making progress. A lot of this has to do with the fact that students are now using previously learned skills and applying them to more complicated arithmetic structures, and it's, you know, the, the growth model just, it does strength. Their, their brains are changing, and as long as we, I see growth there with middle school, I'm usually pretty happy with it. I would like to see some more of that, and we'll get there. For language and science, it's just 3 through 8, K through 2. We don't do that yet, and as you can see, they've all made, all grade levels made pretty good growth. Again, with our middle school, they've already have a very good foundation for usage and application within writing skills. And so, usually, it's just applying those skills to more complex tasks, and the complexity and the rigor tends to make it more challenging. We don't see as much growth, but it doesn't mean that it's not happening. They're just starting to apply those skills more regularly. And then, science, we're, I would say, we're pretty consistent throughout. We are, we use the PLTW for our 3 to 5 cohort and discovered over the year that there were some issues with how many of the standards were met, and there were a lot, there was a lot of supplementation going on to make sure the students had the skills they needed for the assessments. So, we're looking at some other options to be able to make sure that we have a full[1731.44] So we're looking at some other options to be able to make sure that we have a full science curriculum available that will help students even more in meeting those expectations. Mr. Cody shared with me that since the shift to next gen, there really hasn't been, or, I'm sorry, not next gen, the main learning results, they are vague. And so he's pretty much built his curriculum to meet the main learning results and align with national standards for science. And now that there's next gen standards, he's been working to kind of coordinate those two. And he and I have talked about maybe finding some other ways to supplement his curriculum so that we can see it further boost. Because the, the new science standards are, they're more specific and do have a lot more, they cover a lot more areas.
Well, with science, like, sixth grade, say, I don't know, is it more biology? And then you come into seventh grade and it's more chemistry and then the other phys. Does it change like that?
I think it's physical science for sixth grade, which is a lot of, it's earth science. And I don't, well, it's kind of planetary, but it's more of those, those things. Seventh grade, more biology, and eighth grade, chemistry and physics.
Okay. I mean, they're totally different animals.
Yes, they are. And really, in these grades, they're going to get an introduction to it and have enough information that when they go into high school and have a more focused, specific thing, they'll have that background.
So that's why I always wondered how we were going to test science. I mean, in third through fifth, what are they testing? Like, the water molecule? I don't know. Like, what?
There's a lot of, a lot of weather, a lot of natural science, things about the environments.
Plant life versus.
Plant cycles, insect cycles.
If I could just chime in, that's one of the things that we did this last year was looked at some of the new programs we've introduced and then make decisions about achievement based on those programs. And what we found with Project Lead the Way, although it's really strong in some areas, it doesn't line up precisely with what the state tests. So we found that when, by the time they hit fifth grade, they do that science augmentation test in the fifth grade. You know, Sandra Packard scrambling to get in some of the concepts that aren't Project Lead the Way that are really on the test, so our kids are at least taught that.
Right.
So we're trying to augment the Project Lead the Way with more curriculum that really lines up better with the next-gen science standards, which theoretically the MEA should be lining up with.
Okay.
I think that's my last one. That is my last one.
There you go.
Sorry, I didn't say it just one great.
All right, good. And Kevin asked a host of questions that I sent, Francine answered them all. And then I sent her document to you via email with answers to those questions. Like Sandy?
I wish I had a little. That's why this is the end.
Any questions or comments on the, um, file form?
Quick comment to you. In our last meeting in July in the workshop, the comment about achievement and looking at achievement over time and looking at it frequently to see how we're doing was brought up. And this is the beginning of that process for this year, is to look at some of our testing and what, so we can follow, as Kevin mentioned, let's just follow a grade of kids all the way through. And let's see how they do over time, like in kindergarten and watch them for eight, 10 years, see how they do.
Yes, yes.
And this is the beginning of that process. So we wanted to give you an overview of the kinds of assessments and data points we can take on kids. And then next month, we'll have the NWEA done. We're doing it this week.
Right.
So we don't have anything. And we do have a couple of days worth, but we don't have the whole thing done. We'll give you that and that'll be our baseline for our first discussion. Okay?
Yeah. All right, let's move on to six, six one, committee report. We'll start with the long-range planning committee.
We met tonight prior to the meeting. And basically, our goal tonight was to develop a five-year capital improvement plan. And what that will essentially look like as it unfolds is basically putting a lot of our projects, capital improvement projects on a spreadsheet similar to this. And it will.
Just look at it.
It will project five years' health for capital improvement projects. And we'll be developing and filling in some of this chart with costs, target dates, et cetera. We are looking at, we are looking at, and we discussed several projects. The paving, sidewalk repairs, security updates, heating system upgrades. And as we move forward with executing these, these projects, as we scratch one off, another one on a priority basis will, will be added to the list. So our goal and our thought process was this will show, you know, that we are, you know, it's a perpetual thing where we're always looking ahead, always planning ahead. And we are proactively looking to.
Fund.
Have the funds available to execute these projects. So, I mean, the, the first one that we're all pretty much in agreement on is that the paving is at the top of the list. And, you know, we've had some preliminary, preliminary discussions on how we're going to fund that. And, you know, some of these projects may be funded over two or, two or three years, such as the paving. Some of them may be able to be funded in one year. It will all depend on the project. But it's in the early stages of the actual spreadsheet. We had a lot of ideas and a lot of discussion tonight of other, other projects. But we're just looking at getting this document started and give us a baseline to work from.
Well, I'd like Mike to discuss what's going, coming down from the state or not coming from the state regarding the networking, the Wi-Fi or whatever.
Let me just stick to that.
Huh?
Let me just stick to that one, that point. I can. The DOE is making some changes in the, the way it's funding and structuring this technology. Since 2001, 2002, the state has supplied us laptops with minimal investment on our part, including the wireless network along with our student information system. The state is now pulling out of the Wi-Fi industry business, which means we'll have to redesign our wireless infrastructure in the coming year. I've been doing quotes, I've been, I had an RFP out trying to get, um, some E-Rate grant money to supplement some of it. We spent most of our stuff doing the wired network a few years ago. But hopefully, the state will supplement some or offset some of the expense for pupil in the next year. I believe we have two years left, this being one of the two years. But it's still vague. They're still designing some sort of block grant solution from the state. So that will be coming down the pipeline as well.
But we feel that might be a capital improvement we would have to put on our list.
Right, but it's not a huge expense. So I don't, I mean, it's not like $50,000, $100,000 expense. So it might not need to fall into this long-range vision or goal.
Well, like we were saying, it could be just a year. Our long range, some projects are just a year because of the amount of money.
True, yeah. And I'm already looking to replace with some E-Rate funding. So we would, it wouldn't come out. We, we pay upfront and then we get reimbursed from E-Rate.
So is, is the state currently in the business or in the past, was the state in the business of upgrading when upgrading is needed to be done?
Yeah.
And they'd pick up the cost. But they determine the upgrade and the when and the how because they were funding it.
They were also supplying us laptops, specific laptops that they.
Got it.
Chose from specific vendors, being Apple. They're also pulling out of that in the next three years, two years. So that is another thing that, through the grapevine, they're working on this block grant process where we have to supply the number of students, our, our technology plan. The type of device we're going to use is going to meet certain criteria. And then we'll get funding to offset the expense for the devices. But the details are still in the design state. But this is all stuff we have to look forward to in the next two to three years. Some unexpected expenses that we didn't have in the past.
So just so everyone knows, that's why it's long-range planning.
I would like to comment on this process. Thank Mary and Amanda for leading the committee in, in doing a good thinking around things we're going to need. I mean, paving at a dollar a square foot could roughly be $50,000 in the future. And our opportunity to raise or ask to raise a certain amount each year to get us to that $50,000 over the next four years, to me, makes good common sense. And as a committee, when we start the budget process, as we discussed tonight, with warrant and finance, we want to put right in there, you know, we're working on our operating budget for the next fiscal year, but we also have these maintenance, preventive maintenance costs coming up in the future, which would be separate articles when we go to our final meeting with the town. And, and we can be very clear why we're asking for the money. So I think this is a very logical approach. And I thank Mary and Amanda for leading us down this road.
We, we talk about plans. We need to plan for this, we need to plan for that, but it's kind of nice to start to see it on paper. This is what we know what we need and how we're going to get there. So that's good, thank you.
No, she has a copy.
And policy committee, you're going to schedule dates when you get Kevin's?
I spoke with Jeanette on the way in. I think the best, and that's Kevin and Jeanette, I think what worked best for us last year, when we have Kevin available later, or even if we aren't able to tap into him tonight, we can report back out next month. We'll meet monthly. We met every month last year. And we basically, Jeanette's been super flexible and we've met around Kevin's schedule. And we met more than once a month on a couple of topics that required us to meet more than once. So to say we're going to meet every Tuesday morning of the month, you know, second Tuesday of the month, this doesn't really work. So we'll open our calendars and work directly with him on that.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, that brings us up to number seven, new business, nomination of positions and teachers, teachers.
If I could just open a comment on the nomination of position of teachers. Our third grade is large, we have a large first grade, a large third grade, and a large fifth grade this year, of which each of those grades have two teachers. I gave the numbers in my superintendent and principal report for you and broke those down with the questions that Mary had, which was really good so you could see where the kids are and who's teaching those grades. With that, we put in an ad. We, we were waiting to see, it's always tough to do an August hire, but it's a hard call with pre-K, not knowing whether one teacher and an ed tech or two ed techs and a teacher or fully two teachers and two ed techs is the plan. It's really hard to crystal ball who our four-year-olds are. Sure enough, about the time Eileen came back or just before Eileen came back in the second week of August, people were trickling in with their four-year-olds. So I, and that was Judy, gave her a call and I said, I think I better pull the trigger on having Heather decide, Mrs. Levesque decide whether she, LeVic decide whether she wants to go back to pre-K or not. So when I talked to Mrs. LeVic about moving her to third grade, I said, if pre-K were to open, you have first dibs on going back or not because she does a great job with those kids. She said she'd like to. And to Mrs. LeVic's credit, she had set up the third grade completely in that new classroom and took care of the curriculum and had everything done. So it's a turnkey for the teacher we hired. So kudos to Mrs. LeVic as being a champ. And she went back to pre-K and the pre-K kids are benefiting from it because she's awesome. So that opens up a third grade position. We advertised and had several candidates. But as we went through the process of also hiring candidates, there were some strong candidates, but they were getting jobs as we were following them. So I said, gee, Kim, we better move pretty quickly on this one. You know, people that had some experience. And fortunately, Miss Sally Puffer, who worked with us as an ed tech and also as a teacher towards the end of the year to help with some of our alternative learning programming, threw her hat in the ring and it, and it worked out for us and for her. And I tell you, she's come right in a little late because we hired her late, but got her brochure out about her and her class and connected with parents. And she's in her room and she has a class and she's doing great. I think she's kind of paddled her way up and caught up with the rest of us. She's really, really done a nice job. So I, I throw that out as a vote of confidence for, for Sally Puffer. We know her, she's, she's a great teacher and we welcome her to our, our family here.
Okay, and she's on step one.
Kim, do you have that?
She's a BA fifteen, step zero.
BA fifteen, step zero.
Yes.
She's over one, yeah, okay.
Now, does, so she has no teaching experience?
She only had a couple of months last year. And so that really wasn't enough to, you know, so, because she was a med tech prior to that. And then she just did student teaching prior to that, so.
Literally eight weeks that we authorized for.
Yeah.
We had, when we had that meeting over at the Town Hall, we had a meeting in the library. And that was that we had your, your vote to move forward with hiring a teacher for the last eight weeks of school. So that was kind of tough with the student teaching to make that add up to anything.
Yeah.
What happened to the first grade? It says it's thirty-seven in that grade one.
There's two classes in their first grade.
Oh, they're right, oh, okay.
There's two.
Oh, okay.
They were kindergarten last year, there's two of them, yeah, exactly.
There's Maris and Pedagro.
Okay, so it's two.
There's nineteen and eighteen and, you know, respectively. Did you get that list?
I sent it out to everybody. Yeah, the follow-up list that Mary asked.
No, I didn't get that. When was that?
That was emailed out.
Yeah, emailed. What one was that? Which one was that?
Did you see it? Which one was that?
First grade.
What?
No, I don't think it's.
What, first grade?
First grade.
Yeah.
So what I'll do is the email response that Mary got, I'll make sure the whole committee gets. Because what she did is she asked, how were the thirty-seven kids distributed? It was a great question.
We did get it by email.
Two classes. I did send it, yes, I can resend it if I had not.
Well, I'll have to look closer.
Just don't.
I usually reply all what I can, yeah.
Sitting in front of a computer don't do well. When you got to sit.
We know.
But when I look at Levek, she has eight students, so that means.
She's maxed.
She's maxed. Eight was the max with the.
Without ed tech.
Teacher without an ed tech.
Sixteen with an ed tech support. So you look at the other side, you'll see that's what the ed tech support is and that's where there's growth. I'm learning too that eight kids with one teacher is a pretty busy classroom at that age. I go down every morning and I'm, because she doesn't have that other adult. It's kind of hard to even turn back.
With ice on, yeah.
Right, or especially in the early days of pre-K, like right now, they're still learning to line up.
September, October.
Some still cry when the parents drop them off because that's natural. They're only four and some of them are young four.
Well, the whole idea is to get some of those parents to volunteer. We should almost mandatory have that as a rule.
Mandatory volunteering almost sounds like a conundrum.
Mandatory.
Sounds like mandatory service.
Mandatory that if they want to come to our pre-K. Free, free, free pre-K as long as you do mandatory.
Well, they do in, they do in Australia, they don't have school buses either. They, and they all wear uniforms and the parents have to participate. However many kids in a class, they take a week at a time and they have to be there. Can we go to Australia? Can we?
Well, you are, you are the policymakers. You let me know what you'd like to do with that.
You have a policy.
Not only that, but not only them, but there's other school systems that do that.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to authorize the nomination of Sally Puffer as a third-grade elementary teacher.
I'll make the motion to accept Sally Puffer as a third-grade teacher, step BA fifteen, I mean, BA fifteen, step zero for what, what do we call that? Provisional year or something? How do you?
It's probationary, first-year probationary.
First-year probationary.
Of a three-year cycle.
Yep.
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Jeanette. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Four or no? Okay, uh, seven, two.
That's the.
Address that?
Yes, I will and I'll give you a handout. This is just an update of the feelings of the staff. If you pass these down and then to Dell, there may be enough to go around. And when I'm done with mine, Jean, I'll give you mine for the, for the notes.
These are all the same?
They're all the same, yeah. It's just a quick print of a survey and I can explain what this means when they're handed out. So we, we had a discussion at the workshop about rubrics and the opportunity to exceed the standard. You remember Kevin did a nice job of bringing us all to speed of what exceeding a standard might be versus meeting. And we talked about our current practice and we talked about potential future practices. This is, I want to be very clear that this isn't a decision, this is just data. Because I, I think that's a workshop decision, it's not a school committee meeting, quick decision. But I, Mike had asked this same question about rubrics. Mike, how long ago would you say?
Three.
Three years ago on rubrics? And the reason is we have four, four, we have a scale of four, one through four that we can define as assessment for kids. We just can't add a fifth called exceed. So we'd have to move meets down and put in exceeds and make some changes to get us from a one through four and four being exceeds. That being said, Mike sent out pretty much the same survey, worded pretty much the same way. And last time it was a fifty-fifty split prior to the school really doing PBL. I assume it was early on in the days of PBL. And now that we're into it three years, the same question was asked on a four-point scale, do you prefer four being a measure mastered or exceeded? We also talked to this a little bit in our opening days. We had twenty-one responses, which would be professional staff, those are teachers, not ed techs. That's about right. Sixty, almost sixty-seven with going with as-is and almost, and thirty-three with, you know, liking that idea of exceeded. So from the faculty, it's always good to get a false, right? Get a dipstick on the professionals that are doing the work. Where are you folks on this? So that's where we are today compared to where we were three years ago.
So the blue is what we're. So the blue is what we're using?
Blue is what we're using, and three would be change. And as Kevin would say, you know, assessment and rubrics is really a practice, but it's the PBL policy that speaks to this, and policy is purview of the school committee. So we'll want to go back and look at the PBL policy, either in a workshop fashion or in the policy committee, because Kevin's on that, and, and have an opportunity to take this data, the feedback from the teachers, and put that in the mix and see where we go. This isn't, no matter what we do, we're not, I don't feel that we're in any kind of a rush, because this isn't a quick fix. This isn't something that by next month we'll just have done. So we either stay the course with the rubrics set up with a definition of students we'll get to master, and then move on to a higher set of standards, and in some cases, a different cohort, they might be playing up, so to speak, and we have kids that do that. They travel from cohort up if they're gifted in certain areas, such as English Language Arts, let's say, or math, they'll move, because they've mastered everything they need to master at their cohort level.
Last year, did we have any children go to the high school in like seventh or eighth grade to get to the math?
I don't believe we had anybody actually go to the high school last year, no.
Because we had a lot of that happening in the past.
Well, we had kids going there, I think, in math. We had some kids going there for math a few years back, and.
Mark's teaching algebra now, they get high school credit for it.
It was geometry, I think.
Yeah, it might be geometry, because, because we're teaching a high school, the way Sanford has accepted our math program, kids that do well with Mr. Noel, and he'll teach the high school level course right here, so they don't have to physically go anywhere.
That's good, yeah.
They'll accept that at Sanford as a placement of, of algebra, because they know what we're teaching. So that, that we do have. We had four or five kids go in this last year with that level. So, but they're not physically going there, we're teaching it here.
Yeah, that's good then.
Yeah.
Now, let me, let me just ask one question about this. So if this were to change from what we've been doing, all of our teachers now have been really working hard on Mastery Connect, right? Getting all their standards into Mastery Connect and all those things, those would all have to change as well? So that would be like?
Two, two years' worth of curriculum rubric design would have to be reworded and reanalyzed to focus on viewing it, their work in an exceeding fashion.
Yeah.
Yeah, but couldn't you add a fifth column?
No.
No, the system itself isn't.
Okay, I just needed to know that.
Well, to me, it's like, our kids already are able to exceed, because they're able to move up to another cohort. They're able to go beyond the standards and move on to the next standard.
But how do they give you a report card showing this?
And it would seem like it could be noted on their, on their, that they, it can be noted that they exceed, that they're doing it, so you, so you can, the parents can know anyway that they're exceeding. So to me.
I know, it might have to be that.
To me, it would be like a lot of extra work for, for the teachers who have worked really hard the last couple of years trying to get all this stuff in, because we, we gave them so much to do within a short period of time, and they've been really working at getting all these standards in there, and, and it was a chore.
I mean, they can make a record on their own.
Yeah, can I make a statement on the exceedings? We've had a conversation, Kevin and I, and you were there as well, had a conversation about exceeds, meets, or mastered. The way we can report that a student is exceeding with the way our system is structured currently is if a fourth grader is exceeding a math standard at fourth grade, and they're repeatedly showing that they master their skill, the teacher can pull in a fifth grade standard, and then on the report card is going to show that they're now teaching and learning at fifth grade level.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
And that is.
That succeeds.
True exceeding right there.
There was a decision made early when this organization made the move towards PBL, and it was a conversation that at the time was about a fifty-fifty split. It's morphed more towards a six, almost a seventy-thirty, roughly.
It might be related to all the work they.
Because it's.
I'm sure, I'm sure it has something to do with it.
I'm sure that's a reflection of all the hours they've already put into getting this stuff into the, it makes sense.
Didn't we only have three categories before, and then we moved to four?
We did. When I first started, it was three, and we changed it to four in the first few months I was here.
Yeah, so I mean, I like that idea.
It's a data point, it's not a decision for tonight.
The fifth grade would be pulled in, you'd be a fifth grader.
It's good information to have.
Yeah.
Succeed.
Wanted to make sure you got that. Mike did a nice job of getting that out, and I encourage people to get that done for tonight's meeting. Thank you to the staff for getting that survey done.
Okay, let's move on to number eight, old business, foreign language update.
That would be mine as well. I'm very, this is, this is really cool. Now, Mike, if you can jump in at any point in this, I, I have some information I'm going to give to you, and I'm just going to highlight to the committee. These can go around. I'll highlight to the committee the important pieces of this. Please don't try to read the whole thing while we're here, you'll miss anything I have to say, I'm sure.
I'll just keep one part in mind.
So I, I highlighted a few pieces. This is actually a review on a PC magazine that I cut some pieces out of to share with you. So the foreign language committee, let me take you back in a walk-in, a walk-through history here, a walk in times, you know where I'm coming from. The budget before you, the budget before I came on, what was that?
I said, didn't you just get here?
Well, no, there's a lot of moving parts to this. The budget before I came on board, there was a set aside vote for a foreign language teacher. And we had a conversation about me coming on in foreign language and the master schedule. Do you remember, we had two different master schedules? And I'm like, okay, my first thing is, let's not hold them in school without a schedule, I have to, one thing at a time. So we're kind of putting some things in place, and, and you said, why don't you back off the foreign language? I formed a committee. We said, what will we do with this? And we put it in the regular budget instead of a set aside, with the idea we would go higher and do a full Spanish, is what we decided through the committee work, we did a lot of work there. And then, drum roll, we got the funding, but we couldn't find a teacher. And I mentioned to you in the workshop, this is not rare, and it's not an act and thing, that a year prior to this, I had noted an article in the paper where language teachers are difficult to find, and more and more schools are looking at software that's available to learn a foreign language in support of a teacher or support of an ed tech. So my plan B was, if I couldn't find an ed tech, that we commit to the, stay with the commitment to the kids and to the community, we will offer foreign language, but without a teacher, how are we going to pull this off? So with some good work with everybody and some scheduling, right now, we are piloting something with Gail Bover, who's our computer teacher, because she's very savvy in computer software, and she's certainly not fluent in Spanish, but had a couple of years and knows enough of the language to help our kids through a program called.
Duolingo.
Duolingo. So this is something you can read on your own, but I'm going to, I'm going to read the pieces that I highlighted, that'll just kind of give you a sense of it, and then Mike and I can talk about how it's actually playing out here at school, because it's kind of fun. I actually messed with it the other day to get a real hands-on feel for it. Duolingo remains the best free language app you can find, and it's our editor's choice, according to PC Mag. Duolingo offers twenty language programs that are fully finished and mature, which is impressive for a completely free service. In addition to these languages, they're also creating and beta testing some more exotic languages, such as Hungarian, Swahili, they're looking at putting together Japanese and Korean. The exercises in the actual program, and I did this myself to get a feel for it, cover reading, writing, listening, and speaking. That's interesting. Reading, writing, listening, and speaking, sounds like the common core, doesn't it, folks? Doesn't that sound just like what we're teaching in English Language Arts? I thought that was interesting, the way they framed that. The core teaching in Duolingo is extremely clear. Exercises build on one another so that you're introduced to words and concepts at the right point in the program. I think that's a really important piece for our kids. And the other one is, you can move back to, if you get something wrong, like two or three times, it doesn't kick you off, it goes back to go, it gives you another opportunity to get it right. So I went into the computer lab with Mike and Gail the other day, and I said, how are we doing with this? And she's dialed this into her Google Classroom. So Gail can use Google Classroom, Google Suite, there's a lot of products. She can see where kids are in their progress for learning Spanish through her Google Classroom. And she, and she entered me, I asked to be in the class, so now I can see her dashboard, and I can see how kids are progressing in their Spanish language right now, too, which is really cool. It's really high-tech. Now, can we teach and learn a foreign language, reading, writing, speaking, and listening through software with ed tech support? I, I guess. The other side of it is, we really talked about having a full, robust Spanish cultural arts language program, which we're not getting. I want to be really clear with that. When you have a software program and you're developing speaking, listening, reading, and writing, you know, you're probably not making piñatas. You're probably not doing some of the festivals and some of the things that are from the Spanish heritage, but that's the cost difference between the two, between learning a cultural and all those pieces and not getting the cultural piece. So we're not delivering the cultural piece, and we may in the future have a Spanish teacher who can deliver that. But if this works, I would say the best of both worlds is worlds is higher, a Spanish teacher who can offer that, but also stick with the program, because this can be learned anywhere, anytime.
Right.
Which is awesome. And this language is to go well beyond Spanish, but we committed to sticking with Spanish to start with. But we could open this door where kids could make choices. I wouldn't offer twenty, but I might offer four or five and give kids choices. Because the end product is they go to high school, and there's French and Spanish. Unless if high schools catch on to this and start offering languages that are, which I am sure, being a former high school secondary guy, I can just imagine, the, the direction we're going is where high schools are going to want to go, because there's a two-year language prior, requirement for college. That's not to say that college would be foolish to not recognize this kind of learning.
Right.
Of course they would, and that, that's, they have it in national students all the time, their second language is English. So I just think this is really cool.
I'm so glad.
We're starting slow, and we're putting pieces in place, and there'll be more to come.
Finally, technology in education.
We'll have some kids come in and speak some Spanish at the end of the year for you to show the outcome of it.
I would like that.
What a great outcome, they can speak Spanish.
I would like that.
Yeah, something like that. So I, I'll keep you apprised to what we're doing, but the commitment was, let's try something. And I told Judy, this is one of those things where I started, I have no idea where it's going to go. I like to know what the end looks like lots of times, but this is one of those, we're kind of taking a chance, but nobody's going to lose from it.
We're not losing.
You can't lose, it's already built into the schedule. We built a schedule based on this. And, and Gail's been a great support, and we're working it out with her to fill in that now kids who are still getting keyboarding, and kids are still getting computer, but they're also getting, they're getting Spanish as well right now, and they will. Now, the youngest kids, we need to come up, I want to speak to that. You need to be able to read at a certain level. That was the first thing I said, we talked. To be able to read what the computer's saying, and then the cartoon person says the word, when you click on the word that should be the black, you're going to, you're going to be able to read that. So Gail's going to go into the Spanish curriculum that we have, we have years of materials still here archived, and find the flashcards and do the other things for the youngest kids, to bring them up until probably like second or third grade, when they can actually read what the computer's asking them. That's our next step of development. So we've done a lot in just two weeks with this, which is great.
Give it a whirl.
Yeah, it's cool.
I appreciate nothing to lose.
I really feel like it's next-gen stuff, we'll see how it works, and we'll get better at it over time.
You can always have guests come in to supplement and enrich, you know, you can have guests come in, and you can have Spanish dinners, or you can have them come in and show some of the Spanish.
Enrichment, enrichment days.
Yeah, enrichment things, absolutely.
But that's something that, that Gail and I can work together on to, to do some research in here.
Yeah.
That's something that you and I can talk about.
She seems pretty psyched to do it, too.
I'm just so.
You're in the specials, but you meet with her all the time.
I mentioned this two years ago, and I was like, come on, never mind doing all this craziness, get a program. I mentioned it a couple of years ago, I'm like.
And it seems weird that you mentioned it.
Use technology.
This was my plan B. I mean, I kind of felt like we were, and now that we're doing it, I, at initial, the initial piece, and I thank Mike for bringing it to our attention, because, you know, we're kind of shopping around, and I had looked at some other products that, that were pretty expensive, and then Mike's like, but you need a different computer platform to run most of these, so don't overlook the fact that you've got an infrastructure issue. So this is a good first start. This doesn't mean that this is what we're going to stick with forever, but it's just a first start. It's reasonable, I'm looking, okay.
If it's really successful, then we'll know, we made a very good choice.
Yeah, by the end of the year, we'll know how it went.